All right, good afternoon and welcome. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. Lou, could you do the honors of suspending the rules procedure?
Mayor, I moved to suspend the rules procedure as in really rule 6.1, train 6.4.
Second.
That was Shelley. Any discussion?
That was Emily.
Oh, that was Emily? Oh, okay. That was Emily. That's what I meant. I have, thank goodness, this is the last time we'll have to do that because we'll be meeting again. Meeting in July. So.
Hi.
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 The motion carries. Only item on the agenda is the Fairgrounds Parks fireworks in Imagine Hagerstown. How about it?
Just some background first, and thank you for having us for session tonight. Fireworks potentially scheduled for Saturday, July 4th. A group of city staff met on June 17th after state fire marshal approved our fireworks permit or approved a fireworks permit. Through that discussion, it was offered up that as a way to help protect any attendees that would come to view the fireworks at Fairgrounds Park, that one of the options would be to not allow vehicles into Fairgrounds Park by closing the gates at the entrances to the park. There wouldn't, there would still be the ability of folks who wanted to walk in to walk in, but the parking lots would be closed. There would be no vendors at the, at the fireworks and there would be no entertainment. It would just be fireworks. Sent that out to everybody and thought it was necessary that we should discuss this and get your thoughts on that. There have been some thoughts to potentially the option of moving the fireworks display to Municipal Stadium as a way to keep a large gathering attending fireworks at Fairgrounds Park. Talked with Doug DeHaven, who was on the, the meeting here. And the one issue that he brought up was the fact that there would have to be a transfer of that permit that was approved by the state to allow the fireworks at Municipal Stadium. However, the fireworks, actual fireworks display that the original, the, the equipment of the actual fireworks canisters that are at, that would be at Fairgrounds Park are four inch cartridges. Those would not be allowed at Municipal Stadium. The most you can have for a fireworks play like we see at Suns Gate are two inches. And there's also 150 foot height limit at Municipal Stadium. The four inch canister will go above 150 feet. So for Van Belling to try to make that change now in the heat of their main season for fireworks, they've already created the canisters. They're already sitting in their Maryland warehouse ready to be delivered. They, they stated there would be no way they would be able to turn that around, take those back, replace them with, with two inch canisters and have those ready to go by the 4th of July. So basically, I think we boil down to four options. The first is go ahead and have the fireworks display as originally proposed without the vendors, without the entertainment. Second would be to go ahead and not open the gates to cars to allow walk-ins to come in and put a blanket down and chairs down and watch the fireworks. Third would be to postpone this to a later date. And the fourth would be just to cancel. I do know that Williamsport is having their fireworks display that weekend. Wayne's Borough, Boonsborough found out today is having their fireworks display. And then Fountainhead is also having a fireworks display. The only ones that have canceled in this area that I know of is Antietam. And that's obviously because they, there was no way they could have social distancing with the crowd that they get in Antietam. So just putting that out to you all fireworks, as far as fireworks go and what your thoughts are on that, we'll get to imagine that. But wanted to get your thoughts on what you think about how we should do fireworks or if we should do fireworks.
I guess I'll, I'll start off Scott. My, my position on it is I, I think go ahead and have the fireworks. Remind people that there's a virus that it hasn't died, that they need to take care of their own social distancing, follow procedures to avoid infection and make an informed decision whether to go or not go based upon their medical history and, and their personal circumstances. But go ahead and have it. I don't think we should postpone it or cancel it. And the, the main thing, I don't want HPD to be responsible for enforcing distancing, masking, any of that kind of stuff. The only thing I think HPD needs to do is what they normally do is, you know, make sure there's peace and order and protect themselves. But that's, that's my take. I have two cents for what it's worth.
And I echo Austin's sentiment exactly, exactly what he said.
I may be a minority of one, and if that's okay, that's fine. And I certainly have no criticism whatsoever of anybody who, who disagree with me. I've thought about this a lot and I've really come up with, with only a couple of thoughts. And when I look at it, I think about what are the risks of having the fireworks? What are the rewards of having the fireworks? The rewards seem pretty clear. Be a nice thing to have. I was the one who pushed for years to get them. So that, that's the reward for it. And unfortunately, one of the rewards is us as a city inviting our citizens out to come in a large group. And I'll be the first one to admit, it seems to be a question of whether being on the, on outside activities like that is a problem. I understand that, that it may not be near the problem that we think it is. But I look at their, their reward and I don't see a lot of reward. I look at the risk and I see a large potential risk. My other comments would be if I'm right and that we should postpone them to a later date, we'll never ever know that. If we do that, and we'll never know whether we made the right move or not. The only way we'll ever know potentially is if we hold them and find out if there is a downsized to it. So my thought process, my individual thought process was that, that simple. Having said that, I strongly agree, I think probably with everybody, that if we're going to do it, we should not close it off the traffic. I agree totally with Austin that we should make it clear that everybody are adults and have their own responsibilities to take care of themselves. And my guess is, by the way, that the majority of our citizens probably don't agree with me. And I'll be the first one to admit that also. As I say, I have no criticism of anybody who takes the other position and think the majority of citizens probably disagree with me. Thank you.
Lou, I actually agree with you. I think congregating people in a large area right now is not smart. I, I don't think that any of us are going to attend, and I think that speaks volumes. Okay, well, the mayor is going to attend. And I love the fireworks. I just wouldn't feel comfortable in that environment. So I understand adults can make their own decision. I just think there's a lot of reasons right now, not just health reasons, but also social reasons where it's a risk. But I would have liked to see it at Municipal Stadium. With that said, we're going to have it at the fairgrounds. I agree, we can't restrict parking because in an ideal world, I would like to think people are going to stay in their cars to watch them, to be able to social distance and not be congregated in one area.
Well, I, for one, and I know that I don't actually get a say in this, but if I, if I did have a say in this, it would be that I, I understand Lou's position. I understand Emily's support of Lou's position. I also know that, you know, the governor's orders and the health secretary's orders, you know, allow at this point in time for parades and all kinds of things. And I just know that everything that our, our country, not, not just here in Hagerstown, but our country has went through in the last four months, we need some good to happen. And if we can bring a little bit of good to our citizens and a little bit of joy. And again, as, as I said earlier, you know, I can watch the fireworks from the corner of Prospect Park. I can see them fine from there. There's 100 different places in the city of Hagerstown where people can watch these fireworks. They don't have to be at Fairgrounds Park. People every year, you know, fill up the parking area, fill up, you know, the streets around it. You know, they can, they could be in their cars on the streets around it. They can be in their cars, as Emily said, you know, in the parking area in Fairgrounds Park. I, for one, have enough faith in mankind to know that if people want to go out on an evening and enjoy a fireworks show and still feel safe, that they'll find a way to do it. Whether they'll wear masks or they'll social distance from everybody or stay in their cars or do whatever. And I have enough faith in mankind to think that people are like that. So I look forward to it on July 4th. I look forward to it every year. And I, you know, I'm a, I'm a full go, you know, full speed. Kristen?
I hear you about, about adults making their own decision and people being able to social distance and stuff, but I just have to add, because I feel like this is important. You know, we're requiring staff to be there. We're requiring officers to be there. We're requiring firefighters to be there. We're requiring parks and rec people to be there. And that puts them in a situation too where I, I know if my job required me to be in a big crowd of people right now, I wouldn't feel very comfortable. So I, I just have been looking at it from that perspective as well.
I get it. Anybody else?
Scott, Scott, have you heard any, anything from staff about whether they have any, any thoughts one way or the other about whether we should or shouldn't have it?
I'll let them speak for themselves. We've got Doug and Steve. We've got Jelly on and Rodney on. So Doug, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Doug DeHaven and Steve Lor here. I think our position is that just like any other incident we would attend to, we will properly protect our, our folks with face masks, all the equipment that they need to safely operate if they have to render assistance. And I would assume the police department's in the same position, although we have not discussed that. Scott clearly articulated all the reasons why Doug and I would not recommend that we change venues at this late date. And I think if we're past that, that we can make the, the shoe work just like we would any other year, working collaboratively with the police department, the joint command post, and make sure the people we have assigned there are properly protected, which they are every day they come to work. Doug, anything?
I can just speak for the park staff that will be there and will do the same routine that we do every year and will be protected as Chief Lor said. So if we're moving forward, we'll be glad to support the event.
So this is Kristen. You know, obviously I like to look at the directives that come out. It seems like every other week now. And I've asked for clarity on issues associated with liability. I did not see any documentation from staff that clearly delineates within the governor's latest order, which states political subdivisions are not prohibited from opening outdoor public spaces to the general public subject to the following. And it lists three very specific items in which that political subdivision, i.e. the city, must meet in order to do so. And the first is consultation with the county health officer. I'm assuming that we've had that for this specific event at this time.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. I spoke with them last week and the basic direction was that if the event's going to go on, we should do what we can to minimize the amount of people there. And that would be by advertising for people to view it from other venues. And that's where the idea of closing the park to vehicles came in. Is that the whole intention there was to just have hundreds of people there instead of thousands of people. That's the idea.
I, I hear that and I think of the two local fireworks events that I have attended in the past. One being Williamsport and the other being Antietam. Antietam, everybody parks and walks in and it's like, you know, going to the beach at Ocean City. You know, it's, it's wall to wall blankets. I think that if there is a large crowd, that would happen. On the contrary, when I go to Williamsport, everybody sort of parks, you know, right at the, the schools there and, and, and lingers about their car. And so, you know, just from the experience of those two instances, I guess experience indicates to me that if folks are allowed to come in in their cars, they will more likely mill about their vehicle, especially in this instance. I don't look for as many people as some believe to attend, even if we do have. The second is the local health officer may issue orders or directives. So the local health officer has not issued us any specific orders or directives that we must follow if we are to proceed with this event, correct?
That's correct.
And then the third item is political subdivisions must, must require. It doesn't say may, it says must require persons using the outdoor public space to comply with applicable secretary's directives, health officer directives, CDC directives and the state department of health directives. I would only note, as I have previously, at least one recent event since opening our parks, we have not been able to, and the user has not been able to follow that third very specific provision of the governor's order. And which beg my question associated with liability, which is when I read that, you know, the, the second point says may, it says must require persons using the outdoor public space to comply with those guidances published by the CDC. And I know that the recent documentation that we received from MML, which sort of outlined sort of, you know, what's in stage one, what's in stage two in, in the roadmap. Because the roadmap is sort of more of a, here's the things we plan to do over, over the time we plan to do them from the state. Whereas MML sent out and said, you know, here are the specific, I don't know what you want to call it, items in, you know, in each phase. And if you, when you review that chart, which I sent to everybody, the chart clearly identifies events such as this as not being permitted to occur even at the full opening of stage two. In fact, these events aren't supposed to occur until stage three. The flip side of that is it doesn't seem like anyone cares. And when I say that, I, I mean exactly what that says, that nobody's enforcing anything. Otherwise, you know, you know, the other towns would be asking these same questions. And they're not, and they're not because at this point, it's literally being left to, to personal and local political prerogatives. And I think that's a poor way to, to govern those directives in orders. If the impetus then is everybody's supposed to follow it, but nobody actually has to. And, and, and so, you know, I don't know that our city staff can answer this. And I asked a number of occasions, you know, what, whether we allow cars in, whether we have people walk in, the event's going to be the size that the event's going to be, it's going to be of the type that it's going to be, and it doesn't fit within stage two, what liability do we have?
That's a, that seems to be the, the million dollar question.
I know, I keep asking it.
And nobody can, can give you an answer. The thought originally was that if the state was not going to allow fireworks displays, state fire marshal would not be approving any of the permits. And in fact, they were delaying approving permits. And Doug, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, they were delaying approving permits until they felt they had directions that would ultimately allow fireworks to happen. When the permit was approved by the state, that basically to us meant that that wasn't okay, that fireworks would be allowed. At that point, then I think when it, and of course, I'm not a lawyer, that to me would say that any liability would be on, we would not be on the hook for anybody to attend a fireworks display that was approved by all those that would have to approve it to happen. That liability would not be on us should something happen, whether it be somebody gets sick with COVID or somebody, you know, twists an ankle or do whatever, that's the split. But a legal opinion, we don't have.
Okay. So if we proceed with this event, obviously whether there's cars or not cars seems a bit moot in the debate of whether you can meet CDC guidances. I mean, that, that, is that a safe assumption?
I would assume so, yes. We're not going to have.
I mean, I mean, the reality is whether there's hundreds of people or a couple thousand people, if, 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 you know, the end result is, you know, 50 people, you know, a, a walk away trace to an event, you know, associated with, 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 you know, the likely place in which they collectively contract something, whether they did it because they drove in or whether they did it because they walked in, it doesn't, doesn't really matter.
I don't, I don't know that you could say it matters, that it doesn't matter. Of course it matters. We don't want anybody to get sick. I mean, that's not, that, I don't, that's not the point. We're not going to have any park staff or police staff walking around the venue. And if there's 50 people sitting together, say, y'all need to spread out. Let's, let's put it that way. That's not going to happen.
Yeah, I, you know, I guess for me, I feel, to be honest, you know, I feel like the safe thing to do is not, but at the same time, I feel frankly like we would be a bit more than hypocritical now that we've allowed, you know, at least two, what I would call large scale events to occur in the very park that we're talking about, you know, postponing an event and.
I don't, I don't see that it's any different than opening Potterfield Pool. I mean, basically there, we're asking people to maintain their own social distancing and it's going to be the same thing here. I think we, we make it clear to people that there is a virus that hasn't died. You could get, catch it. So, so take care of yourself. It's the whole liability thing is, has been and I mean, I'm going through that right now myself. I'm, I'm getting ready to open one of my operations the end of this week. I'm bringing everybody back to work that's been sitting at home watching, watching reruns. And no one can give me a clear picture of what liability do I face if one of my people comes back and didn't social distance and infects everybody else on the team. Nobody, nobody can answer. I've been asking that for, you know, every chamber event I go to, every, every, every conference I go to, every NFIB webinar that I get on. And no one can answer it. It's, it's, it's basically, it's, it's up to the lawyers later on to, to sort it out. I, I just, you know, if, if we're, if we're trying to allow people to get back to normal, this is the way to get back to normal. I don't think, my personal opinion is normal. The new normal is not what we left back in February. But that's just my opinion. But I, I think, you know, the, the other things that we're doing, we're allowing people on the playground, equipment in the parks, we're allowing, allowing people to go to the parks and walk around the parks. Or we're, we don't have anybody out there telling people, hey, break it up. You're getting too, too close to each other on the, on the west end of the pond when you're walking around. I, I think it's, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's like, it's a decision. It's up to me. If I, do I want to go in a store without a mask or without any, or not maintain social distancing and all that, or do I not want to go in that store? You know, if that store is not, not having somebody remind people at the grocery store door to, hey, you need to have a mask on. I, I don't know. I, I don't know how much we can do. And I don't think, again, this is just my personal opinion. I don't think this virus is going anywhere. I think a year from now, we're going to, you know, we're going to still be faced with the same possibilities. So either we shut it all down or we tell people, hey, you know, use some, use some common sense.
And I think people, as we have seen, are kind of policing themselves. Do you know what I mean? If, if you see somebody without a mask or if you're not, if you don't have a mask on, I know I've been told, put a mask on, you know what I mean? People are very quick to, to make sure that you're following the rules. So you can only hope that that's going to continue. And I, and I think you're right. I think the fact that there doesn't look to be an end in sight. So postponing it to when, you know, like even if we did wait until Labor Day, when, you know, it's said that it's going to, to come back or at least come back stronger. I mean, do we postpone it again? I, I, I have to say that our citizens deserve something good right now, right? We need to do that good thing. And even if we shorten the timeframe, you know, I don't know if we can do that, but just to make it so there's something to look forward to. And, and we put out all the guidelines and this is what we expect. And people are used to it. People are used to having that kind of barrier to viewing things and seeing things and doing things. So I say we just go ahead. I still stand by that. Although I appreciate everyone's, I understand everyone's opinion and position. I really do.
Well, I know that, you know, this, this past weekend, Margie Snook Park was, was full of people due to the softball tournaments that were happening out there and Little League and all that kind of stuff. You know, it's, but, but you're right. It's impossible to police a huge crowd if we have one, to make sure that they are following the guidelines and doing all those. following the guidelines and doing all those things. And Kristen, I understand what you're saying, you know I do, we've had this conversation privately, uh, but I, I also know that, you know, that, like, like Austin said, you know, we're gonna put 50% capacity in Potterfield Pool and, you know, I don't know. I was an eight-year-old kid going to Potterfield Pool. I can tell you right now, I didn't stay six feet away from anybody. I was dunking people and getting, I mean, it's just what we did. So I don't believe that's gonna happen, although I do believe, as I've stated, still believe that, that I believe that it's in our nature that we protect ourselves and I believe that people will do that, they will protect themselves. Um, it, maybe, uh, maybe we'll be completely surprised and we'll have a bunch of groups of 10 people be sitting six feet apart, who knows? You know, so, you know, we need to have this for, for, for our citizens, we need to give them something positive, you know, we, we've all been, you know, walking the walk, doing what we needed to do, um, and, you know, I believe that, uh, that our people deserve it. And again, I, I am a hundred percent behind.
So are we going to issue something if we were to move forward that would say anything to the effect, the city requires persons using our outdoor public space to comply with applicable blah, 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 uh, well, the city will, uh, I don't know, uh, will not be actively enforcing it, uh, for this event?
I think we just need to say that we are encouraging CDC guidelines and follow the rules set by the state.
In all our parks, we have signs up there, basically the CDC signs for all the social distancing, um, things that people are supposed to do. We can put up additional banners and things like that. Um, we've been doing that in all our parks.
I believe you put out a press release about it and, and you put it in that press release and you splash it all over every, you know, social media that's out there. And, and I believe that's how you do it. Maybe the Herald Mail, I should pick this up and talk about it too, who knows?
I just want to make sure that it's clear to folks that go, that, that are there, that, uh, that if they go under the assumption that they're going to seek out somebody from our political subdivision to enforce the rules that it says by this order we must enforce, you probably shouldn't go because there's going to be nobody there to do that. So if you're looking for the, the, the mask enforcer that, you know, at Martin's Grocery Store, we're not gonna have them there.
That would be correct.
Yeah, and I, I agree with the, uh, you know, uh, publishing, uh, publishing the guidelines and the Herald Mail beforehand, I think it's a great idea. Um, and, and just what Kristen said, um, there will be, you know, don't, don't expect that the, uh, the mask monitor is there, you know, don't look for somebody to run up to and say that guy's not wearing a mask. Um, it, it's not gonna happen.
Hi, this is Chief Piper, I just wanted to speak up here just a few minutes. Uh, we have a plan in place that we've had every year to manage fireworks. We've made, uh, two modified plans based on talk with city staff of possibilities. So whatever this body decides to go with in terms of the overall appearance of this event, we will modify our plans to work with, uh, HFD and parks to make sure that we, we get it off without a hitch. So I just, we're just waiting to hear from you guys.
And, and while I'm certainly opposed to eliminating the ability for people to park in there, I do think between now and then, staff should look at the Fairgrounds Park and look at some of the open space areas of where we, they may say, you know what, that open space area there, uh, uh, could get a little crowded, uh, and maybe, you know, make sure those areas are cordoned off. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think, I think that.
If, if, if it rains, you don't want 100 people huddled in one of the dugouts, that kind of stuff.
Absolutely correct. I, I think that could be done and, and I think there's other ways too. Uh, Kitty had brought up a good, uh, uh, a good idea that she seemed being done in other places as well, uh, on Imagine that we could, uh, provide some, uh, discouragement of going and, and gathering in particular places, uh, in Fairgrounds Park. You know, we, we heard you last week, uh, talking about the other two events and, and the exposure, and that is why, being that this is a city event, the fireworks, that's why we made a little extra effort to try to limit the, uh, the amount of gathering that could, that could occur. And that's why the, the discussion on not having the cars allowed to enter was, was brought up. Uh, so it wasn't really anything else other than, you know, trying to take into account what was discussed regarding, uh, the amount of people that were in the park for other sponsored events, trying to make it a little bit more, uh, manageable, uh, for a city sponsored event. But, uh, I would, I would tend to agree that, uh, humanity is gonna do what humanity does and, uh, I, but I don't think that would be a reason to not, uh, provide this, this type of entertainment when we really haven't had anything, uh, of a positive nature to do in the last four months. So, um, that's, that was my little two cents.
Okay, unless anybody is strongly objected to it, we're moving forward with the fireworks and staff and, and those individuals will put in place what needs to be done, correct?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And, and also just to kind of wrap it up on Imagine Hagerstown, that's gonna be July 24th scheduled. Uh, we have two bands, uh, that are scheduled in University Plaza. I would like to follow the same, uh, stipulations that, that you all have discussed tonight and apply that to, uh, Imagine Hagerstown. We would like to go ahead and have that July event, uh, with the Scotty Farrell Band and the Plate Scraper, uh, but at the same time, follow the exact same discussion here. Uh, there will be no, uh, COVID police there. Uh, we would look to, um, uh, strongly encourage the social distancing and the, uh, doing the right thing to, as the CDC guidelines. That would also be the way we would want to do City Park future outdoor events such as, uh, outdoor movies in the park and any other, uh, concerts that would be, uh, done at City Park. We would look to, and Rodney, correct me if I'm wrong, we would look to court off certain benches so that you couldn't sit there, which would promote social distancing. We would also strongly encourage folks, if they want to put a blanket down, they would be able, they would stay, you know, six feet away and all that stuff that we have, pardon it, now ingrained in our heads. Uh, and that would, while, uh, we'd like to go ahead and, and proceed in that manner for those events.
For Imagine Hagerstown in University Plaza, are we not going to have any vendors there either?
We would not, oh, go ahead, Jill, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we thought that the control having people spend in line for things, that pretty difficult restaurant for me and not have free hand. There is a, there is. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I, I just thought, um, this would be a good opportunity for us to promote our downtown businesses then, since there aren't going to be vendors. Um, maybe we make sure we're diligent in reaching out to all the restaurants, you know, within a walking distance in, uh, from University Plaza to let them know we're expecting a crowd, but we're not going to have drinks or snacks or anything available to them. And so it can be kind of a joint effort and hope that it, uh, spurs some business to our downtown restaurants.
And, uh, we, uh, I would have that quite well with the live, um, broadcast that was, um, in June. So I think that, that makes the most of the downtown, get to the payback from our downtown restaurant and enjoy the German show, um, in more ways. There is a key question related to alcohol, that tax format, that the vendor that serves alcohol, uh, we've worked with Harold and Peter in the past, and it's proposed that we're working with, uh, mentioned this year or this year. Um, however, the liquor board has given us the ability for an alternate format, which is a bring your own, uh, alcohol. I think that's bringing me to us for, I'm uncertain of the precedent of that and also what limitations we would might provide that. Um, and the third option is to make it, um, no alcohol event where people can simply bring food and they can go to the restaurant and barge before and after your order.
Restaurants still are under the executive order that they can do alcohol to go, aren't they?
Correct.
So, I mean, that would, that would be an idea too, i- if we don't want to allow people to bring their own alcohol. I don't, there's really no difference if someone brings their own alcohol or goes, except if we say you can't bring your own, you have to buy it from a downtown restaurant, it would help them. But I know people are getting alcohol to go from the art and salsa mamas and everywhere else.
We, uh, would be, have to be wide open on that, both beer wine and hard liquor, with the, with the new kind of limitations, with the limitations having revolving to be bringing women to the area.
That's a lot of checking, Jill. That's a lot of.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just posing the question for the first time, Jill. Uh, I think, I think unrestricted, uh, on the whole of, um, you know, follow the intent of the event, um, I think we'd work well without doing too much monitoring. It would be the first time we're doing this one, just for.
I'm having a really hard time hearing to, to be on, I mean, I don't know if everybody else is, but it's very difficult for me to, uh, to hear even the options. I don't know why. Maybe it's just me.
Do you want me to summarize them, Jill?
No, it wasn't. It was all of us.
Is, is my, is my volume okay? Okay, so essentially the options for alcohol are, um, we do what kind of what we've done before, which was we have someone who's a license holder, in this case it would be the Convention Visitors Bureau, um, and we'd go get a one-day license and we'd have a beer vendor selling beer in the plaza. That's like the format that we all know and are familiar with. It does bring up, um, and Scott brought this up, of, um, people congregating around a beer truck. And so, you know, the difficulty of, are people really gonna stay six feet apart when they just want their beer between acts? The second option is, um, doing this BYOB situation where we got permission from the liquor board to, um, do exactly what you said, Emily, which is, um, you know, take advantage of the fact that restaurants can now sell booze to go, essentially, right? But of course, are we gonna have alcohol police at the gates, you know, saying, where did you buy that? Where did that come from? You know, is it from your fridge, is it from the liquor store, is it from a restaurant? Um, so that seems impossible to really monitor. Um, but there are also questions of, do we want people to bring in beer, beer wine, beer wine, hard alcohol? Do we want glass bottles? Do we want just aluminum cans? Do we want, you know, uh, solo cups? You know, I mean, there's lots of like what the container is of the, of the product. Um, and the third option is there's just no alcohol. I think that's the three options.
And, and provide.
Is there anywhere?
Oh, go ahead, Austin, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. I, I was just wondering, is there any way, um, uh, we could talk to the restaurants that, that do have alcohol to go and coordinate, uh, that they would have an Imagine Hagerstown cup, that, you know, the only, the only, uh, to-go alcohol is in a Imagine Hagerstown cup, so that that way you can kind of see if it's, uh, coming out of a cooler or if it, uh, something purchased from a restaurant.
Or for cost saving, you could get Imagine Hagerstown stickers to stick on the cup, stick on the cups they already have, just so it shows something.
Aren't, aren't we making?
Yeah, something, something to market.
Aren't we making some assumptions that in late July, they're still going to be allowed to sell alcohol off premises?
And the other, the other thing too, is that if we are concerned about congregating in front of a beer truck, we're just pushing that to the restaurants then, do you know what I mean? So instead of us having it to maintain social distancing, now we're just pushing it to flooded bars, do you know what I mean? So I, I like the idea of a sticker and I think Lou's right, you know, who knows by that time if that's still going to be allowed. Um, but I, I can't imagine not being able to maintain social distancing practices when we're all so accustomed to doing that at all times, why we couldn't figure out how to do that around the beer truck or, you know, beer wine truck, whatever.
And, um, Kitty can speak to the, um, approval that we received from the liquor board, but I believe it was in the context of a July 24th event, um, for the, is that right?
Yes, it was in the context of July 24th event, so not for the rest of the, you know, the series, I don't think. But, um, I mean, Lou, that's a good question. I don't, I don't know that anybody knows the answer.
All I know is that I don't like option three. So that's just putting it out there. I don't think that's the right answer. I don't think that's the answer.
I think if you're okay with everything else, we could, we'll work out the alcohol situation between now and, you know, in the next month or so, if that's all right with you all.
Yeah, that sounds good. Work it out.
Yeah, I think, like Lou says too, I mean, it may be a moot point, you know, I thought, we don't know, we don't know what's gonna come the next Friday from now, you know, at another, uh, uh, another rule session, what we have to do.
We can do that.
Okay, sounds like we're done here then. And, uh, you guys are gonna put together what you need to put together about the alcohol. We're gonna have fireworks and everybody's gonna have a good July. Okay, it is, we got 11 minutes to the, for the, uh, until the regular session. We'll see you then.